Hello, Ms. Early, how are you?
Hello, everyone. I am well, thank you.
That's good. Okay, there's now 6:30 PM and I called this session of the Alamo County School Board to order. Ms. Carlson, do you have a motion coming out of the closed session?
I do, Chair Page. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting where heard, discussed, are considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Carlson, second first by Ms. Lee, that we certify that nothing was discussed that wasn't in the motion for the closed meeting. Ms. Johnston, could you call the role, please?
Ms. Lee? Yes? Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Alright, so the motion carries. Since this meeting is being done electronically, the following will have to appear in our minutes. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. Number two, the meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And three, public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. We will now have a moment of silence.
Hello, good evening.
Alright. A mic check or intro of our members. Dr. Kate Acuff.
Right. Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
John O'Alcarro.
John O'Alcarro at large.
Vice Chair Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rayvanna District.
Dave Ober.
Dave Ober, Whitehall District.
Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And student reps, tonight we have both our regular rep along with an alternate that had not had a chance to sit in on any of our meetings. So first, Will Trout.
Will Trout, student representative.
Okay, and tell us again where your school, Will.
Yes, Montella.
Okay, and Elijah Witt.
Elijah Witt, alternate student representative and Western art hall.
Okay, thank you. And Elijah, we are very pleased to have you with us tonight. And you'll also be appearing at our December meetings. So thanks so much.
We will now entertain a moment, I mean a motion rather, for the approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we approve the agenda. Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Mr. Page?
Yes. The motion carries. We need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Alcarro, second by Ms. Ober, that we approve the consent agenda. No discussion, Mrs. Johnston.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. I think at our last count, there was no, we did not have anyone signed up for public comment. So that still stands, right? Alright, so we will be moving to the spotlight on education and this will be introduced by Board Member Judy Lee. Mrs. Lee.
Thank you, Chair Page. Last month, we had the wonderful opportunity to hear from Baker Butler educators about the nationally recognized gains they have made in closing the achievement gap at their school. Tonight, we're focusing on yet another opportunity gap in our schools and in schools across our nation, the percentage of students of color who enter STEM-related fields. Forty-five years ago, an organization was established to address this issue, the National Society of Black Engineers. Its mission was ambitious and vital to the collective prosperity of every community in the United States. The society was organized to promote academic excellence, provide scholarships, train leaders, and expand access to professional careers. A few years ago, the society broadened its charter to include high school chapters. And one of the first chapters in Central Virginia was established at Albemarle High School. Membership is open to students from all of our middle school and high schools, regardless of race or ethnicity. Students from Greer, Burley, and soon Walton are members and students are members. And students from UVA serve as mentors. There currently are 25 students in our local chapter and more than 100 students have had their lives changed by this extraordinary program. Many have gone on to earn engineering degrees at the university level. The driving, guiding, determined life for these young people continues to be Ms. Pearl Early, Albemarle High School Student Support Specialist. A characteristic of this program is its strong emphasis on project-based learning. Students learn how to research, design, experiment with, and refine solutions that can improve our lives. A natural topic this year is COVID-19. And true to form, students have come up with an ingenious approach to protecting public health. I understand that the nature of this development process is that it can take up to two years, but our students have field-tested their invention within seven months. I'd like to ask Ms. Early to tell us a little more about the journey of her students over these past seven years and introduce us to today's superstars who will tell us about their new discovery. Ms. Early?
Hi, I am not able to see you all because it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped you, has stopped it. So if you are not able to see me is because I'm not able to show myself through the video. So I don't know why that is happening. Can Jennifer?
Jennifer, can anything be done to rectify that?
What's the issue?
Ms. Early is saying that she can't turn on.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not able to, it says here, you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. Um, I can just go on though and, um, okay, let's see what happens here.
Okay.
There we are. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, thank you for that wonderful introduction. I want to say first, thank you, Alamo County School Board and Dr. Haas and his cabinet members. It is an honor to come before you all tonight and to be asked. It is a pleasure. I am so excited that you will get the opportunity, all the board members and also anyone who's listening tonight, you will have the experience to learn and to witness what these outstanding students, your students have accomplished over the several months. We have had a very exciting time in doing this project. Dr. Haas, he has followed us throughout the summer months and, and Mr. Barnum and others. I will say that we strive to excite, to excite and educate and empower students to acquire skills and confidence in technology through the interactive projects. We recognize the importance and the value of bringing together individuals in their different perspective. Real innovation comes when all voices and cultural backgrounds are included. And that is what NSBY Junior Chapter has been designed to do. And I will say I'm very successful in getting a number of students across the globe who are in our school division to be a part of what we do. Tonight, I would like for the screen to be shared with Lisa Lane and Mrs. Barnes. And this is where I'm going to quickly move through to the second slide, please. Here, I would like to introduce our students and instructors. You see their last name, but I'm going to go through it. And our students is Luke Price, he's from Walton Middle School. Vanessa and Dante, she's Alamo High School. Julia Dorte, she is Walton Middle School. Clifford Ayers-Brown, Western Alamo High School. John San Sanders, Alamo High School. Young, Jung Lee, Alamo High School. And of course, we have Mr. William Cole's instructor, retired corporate man. Mrs. Lenika Barnes, our science and biology teacher at Alamo High School. Alicia Lane, instructor and a student at the University of Virginia in Engineering. We have three new people that have joined us just a couple of months ago. They are, um, they are graduates in the field of, of software engineering. We have Mr. Ben Dor, he is a parent. His children, they go to Brownsville Elementary School in Henley, I believe. Then we have Mrs. Kellyanne Smith Scott. She is a software engineer. She's out of Richmond. And then we have Mr. Eric Smith, who's in Palmarra, and he is also a software engineer. These people have worked really hard working with the students. And you will see tonight, as I turn it over to Vanessa and Dante, and she will take it from there and the students will proudly show what they have created for this school division. And also the governor of Virginia, his director of technology is also interested in this project. Vanessa?
Thank you, Ms. Early. We saw how rapidly COVID-19 was spreading and how it heavily impacted our next school year. So we wanted to do something that kept our students and communities safe. So we created a contact tracing application. In this presentation, you will see what we have developed and learned over this summer and school year, including introduction to mobile software in MIT App Inventor, mobile software development with React Native, engaging science through literature, and lastly, a presentation of our final project. And I'll pass it off to Ms. Barnes.
Good evening, everybody. So my role in supporting the NSBY Junior Summer Academy and through the school year is providing students with experiences, not only through STEM, but their interdisciplinary partners of arts and literature. So this year, this summer, we started to discuss the engagement of science for women in STEM. And so one of the texts that we used was Women in Science: Fifty Pioneers Who Changed the World. And so what we do every summer and through the school year is we ask students to put themselves in the shoes of their community members and also their community members in their classroom. And we've learned this summer that quite often by the time women or girls get to middle school, they sometimes are discouraged from pursuing, not necessarily on purpose, but just from the nature of STEM itself. Often times, they lose interest or aren't encouraged as much as their male counterparts to pursue science, engineering, and math and technology fields. And so our goal is to help students to see how, one, they can lead the charge to support their fellow students and in continuing to pursue fields such as engineering. And so we will continue to use the text that Ms. Early purchased for us throughout the rest of the school year. We've also practiced, as you can see, putting together a virtual presentation using virtual communication tools such as Zoom and Flipgrid. And so you'll see from these wonderful students and just their brilliance and intelligence just some of the wonderful things that they have been developing since this summer. Thank you. And now I'll pass it on to Alicia.
Are we having some technical issues here?
Can everyone hear me alright?
No, we couldn't, for a little while, there was a lapse. So yes, please proceed.
Anybody can hear me?
Okay, let's, yes, we can hear you now.
No. Can everyone, did that change anything?
Yeah, we hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So I'll talk a bit about MIT App Inventor really quick. My name is Alicia Land. I'm a computer science student at the University of Virginia and I'm the pre-college initiative chair for NSBY. So how I got involved this summer was kind of giving the students a look at, on a simple level, the different components of an application and what it takes to build that. And we use MIT App Inventor, which is an online block-based coding environment that allows students to get that introduction. We were able to create a basic mobile application that had all the functionalities of logging in, signing up, and QR code scanning, which was our ultimate goal for the app we're going to show you today. So now I'll pass it off to Vanessa to give you a little look at what they did this summer.
Here is the block coding for the homepage using MIT App Inventor. The top left blocks are for the logout button. And when the scan button is pressed, which are the blocks in the middle, it'll call and activate the barcode scanner. After the QR code is scanned, it'll take the data to a Google script, which instructs it to put the data into a Google Sheets, which are shown in the blocks on the bottom. It's important to the application because we have to make sure we have the timestamps and everything else in an easy-to-access place. And now I'll pass it off to John.
Our team noticed a predominant public health challenge of facilitating contact tracing inside of buildings such as schools and offices. There is a lack of readily available, affordable technology to perform contact tracing within public indoor spaces in the event individuals in a particular location become ill or are in contact with an individual who has become ill. Our team pursued the development of a user-friendly software QR code with, using QR codes, access to a user's camera, and the user's location on a mobile device by tracking the positioning of a user throughout a building in order to facilitate accurate and effective contact tracing in indoor buildings. Now I'll pass it on to Clifford.
QR codes, also known as quick response codes, are machine readable codes consisting of an array of black and white squares typically used for storing URLs or other information for reading by the camera on a smartphone. Our usual scanning QR codes located outside of each building before entering. An algorithm is responsible for verifying the location of the phone, user, and a timestamp which are subsequently uploaded into a database. And now I will pass on to Vanessa.
The first requirement of our software was that it must use QR codes and GPS to track the location of a device within a building at a specific time given that uses our scanning QR codes each time they enter a location in a building. The second requirement was that each user must have their own account. And the third requirement was a desktop client software capable of running search operations on the database to determine who a user was in contact with. The constraints included compatibility with all devices using iOS and Android operating systems and compatibility to fit multiple screen sizes, including iPhone, iPad, Android phones, and Android tablets. And now pass it off to Julia.
The team chose a design of an easy-to-use user interface that could still meet the requirements and constraints. We considered a careful layout of the user authentication and the planning of user navigation through individual accounts, the blueprint of the appearance for each user's personal information, and the process for editing personal information within the app. Custom logos, fields, icons, labels, buttons, links, have to feedback, and color schemes were all elements used to present a reliable user interface. We ended up making the user interface have a simple yet modern look, along with multiple screens for each step. Now we'll show you the final functional interface we designed. The main idea for the name was for it to have the word trace in it, whether it be at the beginning and/or by itself. After narrowing the choices down to QR trace and QR log, we settled on QR trace. QR for the obvious fact that the app involves the use of QR codes. And trace for how the app traces your steps, as in it keeps a log of where you've been. As for the actual logo, we ended up with a few rough sketches, but settled for the one shown on the screen. With the help of my older sibling, Jose Dalta, who's an art director in Gray, New York, we created a digital version of the logo. For the color schemes, we ended up, we decided that the logo shouldn't be a shade of blue, seeing that blue represents loyalty and health, two things we want to show in our app. There were three different options, sapphire blue, azure blue, and the blue we chose, which is just called blue. There's a chart with the different options that we used to find the right shade. We also needed to choose a few different colors, like a red, green, orange, and another blue. Thanks to a few opinions from the instructors and friends, I chose the colors that are, I chose colors that are light but vibrant. Finalizing the logo was not a difficult task. It was actually pretty easy. We simply had to choose between three shades of blue. We chose the blue that popped out the most and then sent it to the coding team to insert the logo into the app. Overall, I'm very proud of the final product and I believe it, it'll be easy to recognize among students and administrators. Now you'll see the app in action with Luke.
Thanks, Julia. So on this slide, we're going to be showing you a video of Young showing how the app would be used in the school. Okay, so this is not the only thing it can be used for. Teachers can also use it for keeping attendance. It can also, you now get to know when people leave your class and come back in. So it could also be used as bathroom passes. So now we're going on to our next slide, which is going to show the QR trace from the point of view of the phone. So you can see what each screen looks like as you're moving through the app. Yeah, here we go.
One moment, there's supposed to be sound, so gonna try to reshare it to make sure everybody can hear.
We just do a voiceover, Alicia?
Uh, yeah, if, that would be fine too, yes. Because for some reason, does not want to share the sound.
Right, if you hit play, I can roll with the voiceover. So we've seen, or starting over again, so we see here, you can log in and register. And Young's gonna go ahead and register, creating an account. This uses Google Firebase behind the scenes to do all the authentication and authorization. He's logged in, authorized. You can update your profile. If you want to change your name, for example. Removing his middle name here, he's updating it. And saves and gets updated. You can change your password, like in most apps. Young's updating his password now. And logging out and logging in again with the updated password. In addition, we have the placeholders for additional information and the ability to ensure that your phone has the correct permissions. So the camera permission and the location permission, which are things that mobile devices have to deal with. The home screen is here in the landing place. And then you can get to where you scan the QR code, press the scan button, point your phone, add a QR code, scans it, presents you with the location that that QR code is supposed to be in. You can confirm or cancel that depending on if that's the correct thing or not. And once you've confirmed it, that data is then stored into the database. And that is the QR trace app.
Next up, we're gonna hand it over to John.
For our app, we have decided to use three technologies to create, authenticate, and store user data and test our app. To create the app, we use the technology React Native. React Native is a cross-platform JavaScript library that can be used to develop both Android and iOS apps. We learned JavaScript and React Native through implementing features of the app. React Native has modules for scanning QR codes and getting the locations. The app connects to our next technology called Firebase. Firebase is a platform developed by Google for creating mobile and web applications. We use Firebase for its authentication and cloud database products for registering and signing in users, as well as storing user data. To test all of our software, we use the mobile application Expo. Expo is a tool built around React Native to simplify and quickly build and test apps. This is the app we used to test, this is the app we used to test our app in the previous videos. Now I'll pass it back to Luke.
Thanks, John. So what we want to do in the future with our app to make it better is we want to build an admin user interface that's just gonna allow teachers or anybody to just search through the database. Well, and since our software is pretty secure and we have GPS verification built in, but what we really want to do, if we want to add a feature that's gonna prevent people from scanning a bunch of QR codes at one time. We're also gonna build in email verification so that people can't build an account on an email that isn't theirs. Now we're gonna go to the next slide. Okay, so what makes QR trace so important? Why should you choose it? Well, what's so important about it is it's made by students for students. We know what makes an app good and we've been using devices a lot, so we've tried to include that in it. It's very user-friendly. You don't need to have any technical expertise to use it. You just have to tap a couple of buttons. It's effective. It does the job and it does the job well. It keeps accurate logs. It keeps accurate logs and it's good at it. It's private. You have passcodes. You don't just log in with your email like I've done on a bunch of apps before. It's made for schools specifically. It's not just like made for stuff, it's made so that it'll work in schools. And it's really easy to change profiles. You can change any of the data on your profile, like you can change your name. You can change your passcode. Well, that's what makes QR tree special. Now I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Pearl.
Thank you, Luke. I want to thank all the students. Now we will like some questions, and so that we give the students some time, opportunity to answer your questions. You have questions?
Are there any questions from any of our board members? I know we've seen this great product, so do we have any questions?
I, I have a question, and that is, where does this go from here? I, I'm just, I'm, I'm so pleasantly amazed by, by what you've accomplished with this project. And what's the next level that, that you're going to take it to?
So at the moment, we are working on, um, getting the requirements to put it on both the Apple Store and, um, the Google Play Store, I believe, is what is used for Androids. And, um, like Luke mentioned in the future direction slide, we're working on getting a admin page so that administrate, admin, administrative admin can like, see the, um, the data well and get that to see who the person was in contact with.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, other questions?
Have you done, oh, I'm sorry, go Katrina.
Do you feel like you're well-equipped to make other apps after this? Because I know that's, I feel like a hot market, you know, you can come up with something, you have the skills to do it, and then I just paid like seven dollars today to have an app where you literally are just matching things, so. Money to be made. Do you feel like you can make a new app after this, and does anyone have any ideas about apps? I'm curious.
Well, let me say this, um, at the very beginning, the students, early back in April, when this COVID-19 hit our community and the country, but basically our schools, the students were very concerned about how they were going to get back into school and be safe. And so that's when Mrs. Barnes started to brainstorm with me and I with Mr. Coles, before Alicia came on, and we were looking at with the students, what type of app? At first, we were looking at the, how we could literally create an app that would talk to us in distance, you know, making sure we six feet or whatever. But that is something that we are still going to be looking at to answer your question. But then we wanted something that we know that the school division could use, and not only use, but assure the community as a whole that they were doing something to, um, make sure that everyone is, is safe. And this is one, um, project, or this app can do that, as you all saw. Uh, at Witness is, is tracing, and so it's the beginning. But yes, that's what NSB does. Over these seven years or more, we have been working on projects from the University of Virginia into our schools, from the high school to the middle school, and we're very excited to be in Greer Elementary School. And so, yes, it, that's what you do. You constantly create and you move forward.
I think I saw Julia put her hand up as well. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, as for the social distance thing, we had the idea, before we had the idea for the QR codes in school, was to create an app that used Bluetooth and pretty much detects other people's phones to see if they were closer than six feet apart. So I feel like that could be useful, not only in school, but in the general public.
So much more noble-minded than the magic games that I'm envisioning of the Candy Crush version 5.0. A follow-up question, Ms. Early, is do you feel supported by the school system? What else can we do for you?
Well, honestly, they're your children. And our job as educators, school board members, part of Dr. Ha's cabinet is to make sure things like this continue to move forward. That's our job. And so, um, our job is to educate all children. And to answer your question, uh, for the first three years, no, I had to sell this to the school board. But Dr. Ha, down through the years, as his deputy superintendent and now superintendent, he's always been there for all the, all of the students. Mr. Page has been there for us for the past several, several years. So it is what you can do for the students. And so, um, we constantly struggle for funding, but somehow Dr. Ha has found a way to support that as well. And I'm just so thankful to him. You, you hear me, Dr. Ha?
Yes, I mean, you don't need to thank me, Ms. Early. I, I, I thank, I thank you every day because you are making, um, our equity mission statement come to life. It, it, our equity mission statement is that we would erase the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities on student achievement and opportunities through working with families in the community. And if you look at what you've presented here tonight, that's you, the work you're doing absolutely fits that definition. You are accomplishing so much, and, um, what, what, I, I won't take a long time, but I've watched these children, and now they're young adults, uh, just growing up through your program each summer, doing more, um, difficult work, more challenging work. I'm just so impressed with it, and I can't thank you enough. And I look forward to receiving your proposal for next summer, and I can't wait to see what the kids do next. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Well, this is ongoing. We still have some things we need to do. But we want to try to test this throughout the schools. And so I will be getting, uh, we'll, I will put something together and, and get with someone in your cabinet or somewhere, and we can move this forward. Uh, we will be, uh, informing your school board, the school board as well. And so we're just excited, and I'm, and I just would like to, anyone else have a question before we clap and applaud? And we will move out your hair.
Just one, Ms. Early. Um, I think this is a very elegant project, both the software and the, the creative design of the, of the site. Have you talked with Ross or anybody else in terms of, uh, about copyright or, or anything along those lines before you start shopping it to?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's all I was gonna say.
Yes, we have, um, an attorney heirs to Clifford Ayers' mother, she's been working with us. But here again, um, we will be talking with our team, and we will be talking with Dr. Ha and his folks, and we will look at, um, where that's going to move. Uh, but we want, I personally want to see this, um, in our schools and, and helping our schools, uh, especially the principals as soon as we can.
I can speak a bit on that as well. So I've been working with the students on creating, just to be able to get the app on the App Store and the Google Play Store, as Vanessa had spoken on. Uh, we have to have different, uh, terms of conditions and, um, the copyright. So we have been working on that and working with attorney heirs to look over that. But yes, lots of progress on that side.
All right, go ahead, please.
Other questions?
Uh, it's not.
But I do have a quick comment.
Let's do it. Oh.
No, go ahead.
I just had a quick comment. Um, this is Wendell Green, I'm principal of Orange County High School. As a former colleague of Ms. Early, you know, I've seen how this program has kind of come to fruition over the years, and my children have participated in NSB as well. So I've seen firsthand the commitment and dedication that has gone into this. So I just want to give major kudos to her for kind of just sort of bringing a different spirit, a different, um, belief to these students that, um, has been very inspiring to me. Um, she's mentored me over the years to help support some of the visions that I've carried on in my principalship at Orange County High School. So I just want to just say thank you to her for what she's done for all the kids that come through, uh, Alabama High School, and what she's done over the years. So major kudos to you, Ms. Early.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any other questions from board members?
Uh, it's not quite a question, just a comment. Uh, I, I'm just super impressed. Coding is like my thing, like, uh, every night you can, you'll find me on my computer coding stuff. Uh, and so I'm super impressed. I think that this is a really, uh, important and, and, uh, effective step towards like, uh, Dr. Ha was saying, uh, towards, uh, sort of more inclusion in, in the field of STEM, because it really is a polarized field. Uh, but I just want to say I'm, I'm super impressed.
Wonderful. Elijah, you at Monticello?
Uh, I'm at Western Albemarle High School, actually.
You're at Western Albemarle. What grade are you in?
Uh, I'm a sophomore.
You're a sophomore, you then you need to join us.
Right, yeah, yeah, actually, uh, I computer science with Clifford last year.
Yeah, so if you're that intrigued, you need to enjoy, need to join us. And Clifford, why have you not recruited him? Uh-huh, that's right. Okay, thank you, Chairman Page, thank you.
So much, Ms. Early. Before you leave, uh, I think we've all seen an example of how denacious Ms. Early can be. And, uh, probably about two weeks ago, there was a parent, um, special training session. And in order to get one of the panelists for that training session, Ms. Early was on her way to her beauticians. And I think she stopped in the parking lot. Now the phone number for this person, that was either in Virginia Beach or Yan, Illinois. And she called the person, introduced herself to that person, and said that she wanted them to be on her panel. So once Ms. Early is on your trail, it's really hard to sort of say no to her. So we really thank you so very much for everything that you've done for our students. We thank you instructors, and I think some of the parents, like Mr. Green, might have been online tonight too. So we also thank them. So thank you so very, very much, Ms. Early, for what you've done for our students and for Vanessa.
Please give the students applause. Yes, thank you. Have a good week. And, um, Dr. Ha, I'll be talking to you soon, and thank you again.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you again. All right, uh, moving along, announcements in school board business, superintendent business. So I think Dr. Ha has some announcement, uh, to make for us.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I just have a few announcements. First is, uh, just Veterans Day. It was 101 years ago on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month that the armistice that brought World War I to an end was signed. That moment led to an annual celebration of what in 1954 was formally established as Veterans Day. We were reminded last week of just how precious is the gift our veterans bequeath to our nation, when close to 150 million people all across our nation participated in an election to choose a president for the United States. It is an honor for our school division to join hundreds of millions of Americans across our country to say thank you to the heroes who down through history have risked their lives to protect the freedom and liberty in the very lives of us all. We are reminded of the importance of values. For our school division, it's young people, community, respect, and excellence. When one thinks about those who serve our country, we're reminded of these same four values. In all the cities, towns, and small villages where members of our armed forces live, our veterans serve as an outstanding, uh, role model for our young people, for strong communities, for respect, for diversity, and teamwork, and for uncommon excellence. We join in saying, "Thank you to our veterans for what has been stated as the purpose of Veterans Day, the celebration to honor Americans, or America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good." I also have an announcement about, um, this Saturday. If, in case you were not aware, this Saturday marks the big, uh, beginning of Diwali, the Hindu festival. It's a five-day cultural celebration of a return to prosperity, including, among other things, the triumph of knowledge. Or I would like to thank the triumph of education over ignorance. I want to, uh, say something to all of our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators. You all really did amazing work yesterday. I had the opportunity to visit Agner Hur in Woodbrook on Monday, and Brownsville in Croze Wednesday morning. And I, I think I'm gonna get out to Hollymead, uh, tomorrow morning, first thing. And I'm so impressed and proud of the level of detailed, safety-oriented, and caring organization you all pulled off. Arriving at Brownsville Wednesday morning and seeing all those beautiful yellow buses lined up to deliver students, and of course, lots of cars, uh, with parents and families in them. It was a wonderful sight for me. And I know what I saw at, at those schools has been accomplished at all 25 of our schools, thanks to you. I've heard great reviews of all of your work, and I personally enjoyed checking in with teachers and classes at your schools. All of our schools are as clean and as safe as can be, and students on site were very happy to be there. Thank you. Teachers and teaching assistants, for those of you who continue to work in virtual school, thank goodness for you. You had some, you have had some serious rearranging and shifting to do, just when you were hitting your stride with your classes. You are very accommodating for the benefit of your children and families. I know it was hard. Thank you. Every day, I'm grateful to work with all of you, all of us, our employees of Albemarle County Public Schools. Yesterday and this evening, I'm especially so because you have shown once again that when a challenge is presented and we work together, we can overcome it for our students and families. You are modeling resilience for the community. And one more time, thank you. And one final announcement is, I, I want everyone to be aware that we actually now have a COVID-19 hotline. And, um, you may have seen it, that we launched this hotline yesterday with a telephone number and an email link. As a public school division, we are here to serve our community. We encourage any students, families, and employees who are facing hardship due to COVID-19 to reach out for assistance. You can learn more about this service on our COVID-19 hotline webpage. Um, I really want to thank Helen Dunn and Carolyn, Carolyn Hergit, uh, for creating and also monitoring this hotline. Since it was set up yesterday, and message, and messages have gone out, we've had nine, uh, families that have contacted us. All their communications were, were through email, and they were in, in Spanish. And they asked for a variety of, uh, assistance from the school system, which we are able to accommodate by, by, uh, sometimes connecting, uh, the families directly to their school counselor at the school level, so that they can then follow through. But also, we were, um, received a generous, uh, donation from our Public Education Foundation to kick off, uh, areas where we might have added expenditures. So really, any need that you have, please, uh, use those, um, methods for connecting us, and, and we're here to help. Thank you very much, Mr. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Ha, for those announcements. Moving to our business, we will now have our COVID-19 update by Dr. McLaughlin and Mrs. Eileen Gomez.
All right, good evening, board members. I'm Patrick McLaughlin, chief of strategic planning for the school division. And tonight I'll be sharing with you the latest local statistics about the COVID-19 crisis, along with Eileen Gomez. In addition, we'll be sharing some updates about our stage four planning process. So as you recall, we've identified six factors to determine our progression between stages of return. And at the board's request, we provide updates at each meeting on the current COVID-19 conditions in Albemarle County. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Eileen.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is Eileen Gomez. I'm serving as the COVID coordinator for this year. And you can see from this slide about Albemarle County, on the seven-day floating average, our numbers have continued to go down. This has, or a number of cases has declined for more than 14 days. So that is considered a decreasing trend. Next slide, please. And you can see that our percent positivity, that is of all those who are tested, what percent tests positive, that has been declining as well. Although if you look at a graph over time, there's been a little bit of an up and down. So this trend is considered fluctuating. In the city of Charlottesville, you could see that the, it's been a, well, it's showing here that we have a decreasing trend, but you can see that it's a little, it's been fluctuating somewhat, but overall it's lower now than it had been last month. And the percent positivity for the city of Charlottesville is 1.8%. That, we've been low for about a month now. And that trend is considered fluctuating, but we're fluctuating in a very low zone there.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. Go ahead.
I was just saying, there's a couple of ways to look at this data. One is the floating average, which were the other slides. The other is the cumulative total of the last 14 days. And that is what the slide is. I'll turn it back over to you, Patrick.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. And this also, and the CDC also looks at the percent positivity in a slightly different way too, where they look at the average over the past 14 days instead of the past seven, as the VDH does. And you can see that based on our current numbers, our case incidence rate places us at the higher risk of transmission and our percent positivity places us in the lowest risk of transmission. And as we've told the board before, it's important to note that there's a third factor that's been identified as the CDC to consider as schools reopen. And that's perhaps the most important one. And that's the ability of the school district to implement five key mitigation strategies, which include consistent and correct use of masks, social distancing to the largest extent possible, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection and contact tracing in collaboration with the local health department. And when schools implement all of these practices correctly and consistently, it lowers the overall risk of transmission in our schools, even when other factors are elevated. We currently have all five mitigation strategies in place and feel we're implementing them correctly and consistently. And we'll continue to monitor these numbers and our mitigation strategies now that we've moved into stage three of our return to school plan this week. With the move to stage three, we had over 2,700 students scheduled to attend in-person classes this week, although a few were sidetracked a bit today by the weather. In addition, we've got 140 buses on the road each day, bringing kids to school and delivering meals, which are being served to about 3,500 students every day. Stage three also brought the return of high school athletics and conditioning programs began this week with 75 to 150 students attending conditioning activities at each of our high schools each day this week, with the exception of today with the weather cancellation. And while stage three has just begun, I wanted to let the board know about our work to plan for stage four of returning to school. And first and foremost, we are making no assumptions that there will be either a recommendation or board approval to move to stage four in the second semester. That will be driven again by the factors we shared at the beginning of this presentation. However, since there's a possibility that a move could occur as early as February, we are developing our stage four plan. I'll share with you tonight a shift to our decision-making timeline, as well as how we're developing a more detailed plan for stage four. So based on stakeholder feedback, we're shifting the timeline for making a decision about which stage we'll be in as we enter our third marking period. On December 10th, we'll present to the board a detailed report of our, from our stage four planning team, describing the instructional and operational plans for that stage. On January 14th, Dr. Haas will make a recommendation to the board and then we'll hold a special board meeting on January 21st for the board discussion and decision. Should the board decide that conditions allow for a move to stage four, we'll likely need to move the start date for that stage from February 1st to a date a week or two later in order to have adequate time to prepare. But a detailed timeline for that will be presented on December 10th. Some of the most consistent feedback that we heard from our community and from our staff when we moved to stage three was that our operational and instructional plans weren't quite detailed enough for families and staff members to make informed decisions about returning to school. Our stage four planning team is now up and running with four key teams. Our operational team is looking at key questions around school capacity, transportation capacity, food service needs and after-school programs. The human resources team is reviewing their accommodation request process and timeline to adapt that for a potential move to stage four. And our policy team will be developing needed standard operating procedures. Our instruction team is developing detailed plans for both our secondary and elementary instructional models for the next stage. The instructional team is by far our largest with 10 lead coaches and 10 assistant principals paired together to lead conversations by subject area in the secondary level. And it will have a separate elementary instructional team as well. Teacher voice in the instructional plan is crucial for its success. And this week, we've invited secondary teachers to be a part of the planning process. So far, we have 65 teachers who have signed up to participate. Early next week, we'll invite elementary teachers to be a part of the process as well. And the work these teams of these teams will be shared with the board and our community on December 10th so that our stakeholders can make an informed decision about returning to school in stage four whenever that decision in that time may be. And finally, I'd just like to reiterate what Dr. Haas mentioned just a moment ago. There are COVID-19 support hotline is up and running. As you can see, we've got both a phone number and an email address for our community to call us if they are in need and we can connect them with resources, both in the school division and with our community partners. So that concludes tonight's update. I really appreciate the time to speak with you and I'll be happy to take any questions or hear any comments that you may have.
Patrick, I have a quick question.
Yes.
How does this compare to Charlottesville's plan? I guess what I'm asking you with the February date, I'm just, I'm wondering because I just read in the newspaper last week about how Charlottesville is voting next week to open in January or something along those lines. I could be misinformed.
So I would say I am, I'm not, I saw that Charlottesville had made some decisions, but I'm not familiar with the details of those. So I can research that a little bit and get back to you with some information about that.
Okay.
I just, I have a comment, a request, I guess. I do really appreciate the shift in timeline so that people have more information and I appreciate the stakeholders being a part of the process. So I know that we're all, you know, designing the plane as we fly. And so I do really appreciate that. In terms of the information that we get at each meeting, I would like to request, given how fluid the situation is, and I know we're all following the news with like exponential increase in cases, if we could get the most recent data at our meetings, just, just be as like three days can mean a difference.
Yes, so we, we would, we get an update on the, on the VDH data each Monday. We can check with Ryan McKay to see if he can provide us, you know, maybe a Thursday morning update as well. The CDC data is available by day. They update that daily on the site. We tend to use the same day, so it's consistent, you know, with, we don't see a difference there. But I would be happy to check in with Ryan and see if he can update those numbers for us to get him a little bit closer to the board meeting dates.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
When is the third quarter start date? I can look at a calendar, but you probably don't.
Third quarter starts February 1.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions then in this section from?
I just want to clarify, for the, Patrick, for the high schools, that's effectively second semester, right?
That is second semester.
It's like the start of the new classes.
That's right. They would, they would switch, you know, our classes on a four-by-four this year and February 1st would be the first day of new classes in the second semester. That affects some middle schools to have a few classes on a four-by-four that would be switching at that time as well.
So is that our target? Just said beginning of February, I'm wondering if that's the target.
That, that was the original target when we had, when we were using December 10th as a decision point. With the shift to January 21st as a decision point, it's going to take, we're not quite sure we can get things turned around by February 1st to have things ready to go if we got the green light to go back. So if that's, if there's feedback from the board about that timeline, please send it my way and we can, we can discuss that in cabinet as well.
Yeah, I guess my little piece of feedback is just, I guess maybe I should talk with you because I'm just kind of curious, not curious, but I'm kind of concerned, I guess, about backing off of our timeline. I get the rationale, but then to say that it's not even going to line up to when we're having a semester shift in the high school is, I guess, a little. And then to hear that the city is pushing for earlier decisions, not that we need to do that or that's right and they haven't even voted on it. But I guess I just have some concerns about why we would try to be aiming to switch things in mid-February. Like why is that the date that we're shooting for? Seems like February 1st at the very least would be the date that we needed to have the decision. But I could be alone in that thinking.
Just following what Katrina has just said. I mean, I know that the 14th of January is our organizational meeting, but is there a reason that we couldn't, if that were a decision meeting, then the February 1st date would be more feasible, perhaps? Just a thought.
So again, we can, we can take feedback on that timeline if it's the board's request to receive the superintendent's recommendation and have discussion and decision the same evening. We could potentially make that alignment.
I guess I'm confused. I thought the recommendation was in December.
No, ma'am. The, in December, we're going to present the detailed plan. So everyone knows what stage four would look like whenever we go there.
My confusion, sorry.
Okay, are there other comments or remarks at this time on this item? And Ms. Carlson, we will, I guess, be considering what you're saying, but thinking about that, I guess, as we move along.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to have that discussion or not. I don't know how other people are feeling that just, it seems, I mean, that's kind of a big shift that we're being presented with in some ways to say that we're moving off of the model we had proposed and we're operating on a different timeline.
I think that's sort of to make sure that we are doing the very best job that we can. I think that's why the timetable was changed a little. But I understand your point there.
Yeah, if it's a two-week difference between like mid-February and February 1st, I'll stop talking. I guess, signing and he's ready for that break, so I'm going to take it as agrees with me.
I mean, given that now the 14th, the first meeting of the year is when the recommendation will be presented, rather than waiting two weeks till our normally scheduled meeting, it's also possible, isn't it, to have a special meeting?
That's what we would do. We would have a special meeting on the 21st.
Yeah, that's right. This is a special meeting. January 21st is a special meeting to vote on the proposal from January.
Right. But okay. Never mind.
Okay.
Matt, you look like you had something to say.
I would just offer that part of our consideration for slowing down the process was that out of consideration for teachers, because they are just now, like a lot of the feedback we received on the last time that we made a recommendation and move forward on it was that the teachers had just been starting to hit their stride with virtual and that it was very disruptive. And so we were just trying to be sensitive and not all of a sudden ramping things up again to make possibly another recommendation. And so we decided to take our foot off the gas with that respect. I do understand, however, the sense that it maybe, might be too long. You know, another alternative could be to front-load and have a special meeting to make the recommendation the week before the 14th. It would still give a considerable, considerably large amount of time to pass between yesterday and when we would firm things up for a recommendation to the board. It would also allow for Dr. McLaughlin and his team to put together a very concrete explanation of what stage four would look like for the December meeting. So it'd be really clear to everyone. We could then address questions and get feedback to continue to improve it. If we had a meeting on January 7th with that being the only agenda item, it would be after, you know, the winter break. So people would be back in town to attend to it. And then we could do that and then the next week, the board could act on it. That's another alternative that's a compromise between the two concerns because if we were able to have a decision on the 14th, and all this is supposing that we would recommend stage four, I want to reiterate what Dr. McLaughlin said is that that's not a foregone conclusion. If we did do that, it would give us still a fair amount of time to get things in order to start on the semester break.
My concern with that, everybody, is that in order to make that analysis, the analysis is going to have to be made really over the holiday break. And some people have raised concerns and I hear it. I don't necessarily know that I agree with it, but I hear it that there may be a real issue as people come back. And so I wonder if we make a recommendation on the 7th and we vote on the 14th, that's not giving, you know, a 10-day, 14-day window from the time people return. I think that might be, that just seems tight to me.
Okay. We could take a straw vote maybe on those two proposals. That would be one way to sort of settle this, I think. So our two options would be to have the plan on January the 7th, vote on the 14th. That would be option one. Option two would be to have the plan on the 14th, vote on the 21st. So is there any objections to taking a straw poll on that? Hearing none. Mrs. Johnston, could you call the roll for us? And option one, January the 7th, 14th. Option two, January the 14th, 21st. Ms. Johnston.
Chairman Page, Ms. Johnston, I believe she had to stop, you're there.
I'm here. Okay. Dr. Acuff? Oh, put me first. Option one. Mr. Alcarro?
I believe it's option two, 14th and 21st.
Mr. Oberg?
Option two.
Ms. Lee?
Option two.
Ms. Osborne?
Option two.
Ms. Carlson?
I'll say option one because it's inconsequential at this point. And I want to emphasize, I don't know if I necessarily have much information that is like. So I guess I need to have a meeting with you, Patrick, at some point. I mean, I'm curious what teachers think about starting a semester and switching two weeks after they start the semester. I mean, that might be more disruptive to their plans than, I mean, I don't know.
And then Mr. Page? I'm sorry, did you say option two?
Two, two.
So option two it is.
Right. So we will proceed then with the recommendation on the 14th and our vote on it on the 21st.
Would you mind if, would you mind if I said one more thing?
No.
Okay, so another thing to consider, because we, this is just time to be flexible. I think we all can agree on that. I think the key is that involving the teachers in the planning. And I think that having the secondary teachers really heavily involved will help us with the second semester. And again, I don't want to add another wrinkle to this, however, keeping in mind that we can move the start date for the second semester. We can have, we can have an additional week or two in the first semester of classes so that we do start the second semester classes. They would be a little shorter, but keeping in mind, these things that we do are often arbitrary. We are, we, I know we have concerns about class time and students getting their Carnegie credit. However, all those, all those aspects have been waived by the Virginia Board of Education long even before COVID-19. So if that becomes a a real issue, something of great concern to the school board, we can make that adjustment so that the new classes don't form until there's a change. Or if if there's, if the board votes to not change, or we recommend to not change, then it just won't be an issue. Because they'll be going into the same stage with the beginning anyway. So I think I just, I guess the reason I'm bringing that up is because I just want everyone to feel like that our primary consideration, and I know this is, and I know that I'm preaching to the choir, will be the safety and well-being of the students and we can adjust everything else around that. We can start the semester when we want to start it. We can make other kinds of adjustments that that you want to make as a school board to accommodate those concerns. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. And I I too agree with what Ms. Lee said and what you said about making sure that we have a lot of teacher input. Both from high secondary and from elementary to make sure that everybody is on board with the plans that we have moving forward. Are there any other comments or questions related to item eight, one, COVID update? Okay, if not, for approval, the new Boys and Girls Club design presented to us by Ms. Lisa Walker. Mrs. Walker.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Lisa Walker. I'm a project manager and planner with ACPS Building Services. And this evening, the Boys and Girls Club Design Team will present the revised schematic design for their new facility. The design team presenters are Jeff Bushman of BD Architects, James Pierce with the Boys and Girls Club, and LJ Lopez with Milestone Partners. As a bit of background, in June of 2019, the school board agreed to lease land adjacent to Jewett Middle School to the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia for a new facility. The original lease was approved by the school board in December of 2019 and amended this July to change the location to the driver training range to the front left of Jewett Middle School. According to the terms of the lease, design and construction drawings for the facility and grounds will be approved by the school board prior to the start of construction, which is slated for mid 2021. The Boys and Girls Club will be responsible for all construction, maintenance, capital and operating costs of the facility with the exception of mowing and snow removal, which will be done by the county or ACPS. This, this item was on the consent agenda for information at the October 22nd meeting. And tonight, ACPS staff is recommending that the revised schematic design be approved. So without further ado, I will introduce our presenters, Jeff Bushman, James Pierce and LJ Lopez. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Chairman, board members, Superintendent Haas and staff members. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. In 2017, the Boys and Girls Club learned of a report of a need for additional out of school time slots in the county. We responded then to a, an RFP that the county presented and we have proposed a center that would accommodate 300 members per day and increase our membership at the Jewett Club to over 500 kids per year. So that's an increase of 200 for what we're doing now every day in school or after school in the summer. With input from Admiral County Chief of Police and partners in the school system, we're proud to bring you a design tonight to look at. Two key points on this slide that I wanted to point out are that May 21, we're looking at breaking ground and we're hoping to open with the opening of school in 2022. I just want to share a couple of key features of the building design. We forward, oh, here are our list of partners that that are at the very top, Admiral School, Admiral County Schools and Boys and Girls Clubs have worked closely on this together. You can see the partners that have been consulted in the design, including some of the partners you work with in your schools, Wild Rock, PB and J Fund, et cetera. All right. This is just a brief outline to show where in time and space we are. This is the most populated campus of the, in the county schools and we think will also allow for expanded instructional space during the day. And we hope you are as excited as we are about that. Here's a quick comparison of the two sites. Although the former site was larger, the current site, the 4.94 acre site is a lot more flat and will also require fewer trees to be pulled down. So we're very excited about that. Here's a slide just showing a quick access, how how kids are going to be arriving to to the site. You'll see an outline in light blue of the building and you'll see that we've got members arriving from two two sides. There was a two sided lobby. So the orange and red lines are the Greer and Jewett lines are going to be crossing over a raised crosswalk. And then arriving to the le- left side of the lobby. And Admiral's, Admiral High School students will be arriving, the blue lines. Some of the safe routes to school routes are, I believe, painted in over there on the right side, showing how students from Admiral would be accessing the facility. Here's just a little bit of a parking plan and showing how buses will be accessing this facility as well. The red line that goes deepest to the left is showing how our staff members will be accessing their parking lot. The the blue parking lot in the front with the double entry is for parents, visitors, volunteers. And the yellow dotted line shows the the route of buses from from Woodbrook and Agnor Hurt for members that will be attending by bus. Very excited. The the outdoor environment really plays well into our our building plan on and our program plan on this site. It's perfectly, there's a a U-10 sized soccer field that's contemplated. There's a track that surrounds that and a network of trails that are connected to through the the southern side of this of this slide. You can see again, the light blue building. There's a feature called the bowl, which is a terrific adaptation of what the current landscape allows. It's a hard court at the bottom and it's about a 30 foot in in incline up to the very top of that bowl. I'll show you some pictures a little bit later. Exterior to the teen side of the building on the right is a sport court, a full sized basketball court outside and and sports field with seating. Also, a teen hangout area on the right side. And the arrival plaza you can see on the top. So any any member who is not driving age, basically, is going to be, is going to be entering from the left side of the entry. Here's a little bit of the building character showing the the adjacent woods. We're so excited to have such a beautiful area behind this facility. And we will take advantage of that certainly with large windows that face that face those woods. Here's what's currently in place. And then very quickly after that, you can see a rendering of what the new facility will look like on that space. We are contemplating a net zero impact here, energy goal, and that will be achieved through solar on the rooftop. Here's a view from the other side, again, focusing on the the sports facility. The outdoor field will not just be soccer, obviously a flat space for kids to run and play. Another feature that we hope will be utilized by the schools during the daytime. And the track, the surrounding areas, and then the link down into the wooded spaces will provide us many, many program opportunities. And you can start to see the bowl emerge right next to the youth wing on on the exterior of this side. There's a view from the back. Again, you can see the bowl to the left, the field to to the further left and then we've got we've got some of the features on top. I think it's a good time for me now to bring in, I get so excited about this plan, I could just talk for days, but really, the creative inspiration for for the rest of the character of this is from Jeff Bushman from Bushman-Dreyfus Architects. And I'm pleased to have Jeff here today to to tell us a little bit more about the character of the the building. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Yeah, so happy to be here and be showing you the beginnings of this project. Yeah, the south view shows one of our main drivers and thinking about the design is relating the building to the woods, to the trees, to the sun on the south side. So here's a good example of the little sport court on the west end of the building, opening up to the sun and the trees with some slope seating for all kinds of different activities, sports, gatherings, lessons, small group meetings, teachings, classes and things like that. And and you know, an inspiration from our landscape architect, driving the, our thinking about the the bowl is this beautiful amphitheater, Swarthmore College, which has mature trees grown in, but we're really interested in providing a shaded, beautiful hangout for for everybody. And here's a cross section showing the 20 foot drop from the upper level. And then there's another four or five feet down to the lowest level of the building. But this is a nice view looking into the woods from from the bowl. And here's an example. Sharing with you our intentions for improvements for the campus along Lamb's Lane and mostly in the form of landscaping, a low hedge to hide some of the cars and canopy trees to provide shade and enhance the safe routes to school sidewalk that's being built separately and independently of this project. But we'll come in with some both wayfinding enhancements in the form of monument signs. And we'll clean up and plant the edges of that sidewalk. James, do you want to talk about program? Or shall I keep going?
I got it. Let me do this part and then I'll hand it back to you for the more of the exterior character and pictures. So we have in in pink here the multi, multi age spaces. So again, the double entries. Then you, most members will arrive right down this hallway, pick up a snack and head into the cafe space. We have an instructional kitchen and an associated classroom next to that. We have a little gym here. A larger gym to the right over by the by the teen side. The green area to the right is the teen center, specifically the blue area, light, light blue to the left is the youth wing. And you can see each of them interacts with the exterior of the facility to extend our programmatic space. So to the right of this facility, the teen side opens out onto that porch and then athletics area with a associated seating area to the right of the court. Similarly, on the left of the building, you've got five, one, two, three, four, five closed door rooms and then a game, a large games room on the far left. And then you exit right out to that bowl with to multiple exterior fitness spaces. Also notable is the exterior porch to the south. That's on the lower floor and that will be a great outdoor space for eating in the summertime and on nice days for meals. I also want to point out the STEM and art rooms, which have a porch right out to the outside. So a lot of our STEM and art programs are get kind of messy and we love that. We also want to provide some outside space because we know the projects, many of the projects we're going to be doing will involve some outside space. So we like the interaction between the indoor and the outdoor in every part of this facility. I believe the next part shows the lower level. We love the squash courts. Squash courts can do so much. We're looking forward to introducing a generation of kids to this fantastic sport. We've already had a three year long partnership with Boars Head where members from this club already are attending learning, learning squash. The top 10 squash players in the world are international players and we think that the background of students and members, especially at Greer Elementary School with such such an international sport will be a welcome addition to to their background and repertoire. So on the top offices, this is the third floor, the administrative offices will be moved to this facility and just nothing really much to say about the administrative offices. Jeff, is this good for you?
Yeah, so this, we've started to develop the building in three dimensions and this just shows in three dimensional form, how the rooms relate to one another. And and what it really shows is although the site is flat, there is some topography on the site and that is bossing around the plan a little bit. But in challenges come opportunities and what we have really is a long and skinny building where all the rooms have great natural light. And the shape of the building is generally following the shape of the topography, but this shows how the southern wall addresses the trees. You can see connections to trails in the woods. You can see the outdoor terrace in front of the squash courts, which is directly connected to the cafe upstairs. It's a great place for lunch, gathering or or lessons and any other activity that is going on that day. And here's the flip view on the north side. Showing the single lane bus drop off on that side and our arrival plaza, which is also a gathering place. And it shows some of the improvements along this leg of Lamb's Lane as well. This cross section through the structure shows how we're using the squash courts to help navigate around the change in levels from high to low. Works very well, connects nicely with the terrace outside. That's our linking space to the woods, as I've said. The headquarters offices are up on the third floor and all the program spaces are on a single ground floor level. Here we see conceptual rendering of the cafe, which is whose design is is driven by a relationship with the trees out the big windows. We are beginning to think about solar shading devices on that south side. You can see the stair going down to the squash center and you can see through and beyond to the wing of the building dedicated to youth. And this is a quick rendition of the game room, which is just a bustling hub of activity and fun. Again, open to the south light and the trees. And then on the lowest level, you can see the stairway coming up or coming down from the cafe with a door directly onto the terrace for lunch on those picnic tables. A gallery big enough to do stuff in and coach's office right in front of us and behind, which are four squash courts facing the the windows. Finally, the big gym. I think it's fair to say that light and visibility are the themes here for both our big gym and our little gym. Again, it is just another bustling activity on the street side of the building. Should be very attractive space for the whole community. And that concludes our 27 slides showing you the schematic design level of development of our project so far. So now, Lisa, I don't want to steal your thunder, but we're open for questions and answers.
I have one question regarding safety and security. It's not something I'm alarmed about or really seriously concerned about because I know that the Boys and Girls Club attention to detail, especially on subjects like this is 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 top notch. When the kids are out in the bowl or when they're looking out in the woods area. You know, and and because I think that, I think the woods is is really great aspect to this. What kind of safety, what kind of security will there be? We saw the 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 people in the staff shirt. I'm looking at the one on the screen right now. And will there be staff people outside pretty much at all times when there are children outside?
John, thanks. Great question. I love that you noted that there are two staff members in this depicted in this shot here. Anytime there are, we have a rule of three, first of all, so there's never any one person alone with any other one person in in any activity in the club. And then we also have a ratio of one to 18. And so there will always be one staff member leader for every 18 members. Very, very often, it's it's even a lower ratio than that. In our summer programs, we have about two, two staff members for about every 22 kids. And so we will always have a eyes on eyes supervising adults that have been background checked and certified safe leaders of our clubs inside the building, outside the building, field trips, any, any club activity.
And I guess I know you said it, but I guess I missed it. What what's your total number of staff estimated to be for the for this property?
We'll have probably 25 member staff on hand at any one time during the after school program. That'll probably go up in the summertime.
Super. Thank you.
I have a question, I think perhaps for James. Is the, is the rave walkway part of the CAC sidewalk project, or is that something that you all will be constructing?
It's a great question. I believe that is ours exclusively, but I know that we've had very recent conversations with the Safe Routes to School group, so I'm going to say that that's our project.
That's, that's correct.
Thanks, LJ.
There are other questions from the board?
I would just say it looks awesome. One of the best ones I've seen. Wish I was a kid again.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelsey.
Yeah, the plants are really beautiful. And what, you said that the bowl was like a natural depression already in that area?
Yep. Jeff would be good to talk about this.
Yeah, that's correct. There is a, as currently measured, about 16 to 18 feet of drop to, to the lowest existing part of the driver's ed site to basically right up at the Jewett Crosswalk. And so we're using that 16 feet. The squash level goes down about three or three and a half feet below that. So we have a ramp coming up out of the squash level to the little sport court. And then stairs connecting back up the hill to the, to the crosswalk. And in a similar fashion, LJ, if you go back to the west view, the, the field, the big sports field is healed into the topography just a little bit, and we get a nice opportunity for some seating on a slope looking down over that field below the, the one road parking. And then there's a, there's a kind of running track, a walking track, a nice circuit that goes around that field, which is good for all kinds of different uses, both physical fitness and just taking a walk with somebody.
There are other questions? I also like the solar panels on the roof there, and that roof deck is nice, too. So the plants are really beautiful.
We're really pleased with them. Thank you, Mr. Page.
I just want to say that I can't wait to play there. That looks just like, I'm like, yeah, I'm I'm a big kid, and I acknowledge that, and that, that looks like it could be a lot of fun.
Really does.
Great.
As James said, he raised the bar really, really high for us. He said that the club needs to be the highlight of any kid's day when they walk in the front door. So that's what we're shooting for.
And you did say that the enrollment would be 500 students per day roughly, right?
Sorry, 300 members capacity and 300 members daily, and then certainly not every member arrives at the club every day. So we have a membership that would be larger than that. So we're, we're anticipating an increase in membership to 500 to 600. Okay. Some members are spring break only, some members are summer only, some members are every day after school only, and at any given time, we'll have a, a, a membership regularly attending of about 450. Certainly not every member comes to the club every day.
Other questions?
Just one. I guess, I, I guess, well, our kids aren't in school. Well, our kids are back in school slowly, slowly. With a mid 2021 opening, when do you anticipate the first shovel in the dirt?
Great question. I think our timeline shows that May 21 is the shovel in the ground. We'd love for you all to be there.
Okay.
And then opening, we're trying to coincide with the opening of school 2022. So the best time for any Boys and Girls Club to open is the beginning of school. We've done this enough times where, you know, we, we know that there are beginnings. January 1st is a good beginning because people have made new plans, or the beginning of a semester, as you were talking about before, you know, that has a big impact on families. And so we're really shooting for the first day of school 2022, which means taking possession of the facility a month or so ahead of that, really testing out all of the corners and crevices, making sure we know everything about the facility, and then, and then opening for members shortly thereafter with the opening of school.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce, and Mr. Bushman, and the rest of the team there. Beautiful presentation.
Do we need, we need to approve this?
We can see that it's for approval on the agenda, so could I have a motion?
I move that we approve the new Boys and Girls Club design to go in on the Lamb's Lane campus. And that we approve it tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Mr. Oberg, that we approve the Lamb's Road location for the Boys and Girls Club. Mrs. Johnston, could you call the role for us, please?
For Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Paulson?
Yes.
Dr. Aikoff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Pass.
Okay, so the plan is passed unanimously.
Congratulations, everybody. This is, this is going to be so exciting for all of the kids and, and Mr. Oberg. So we'll make great use of it. Thank you.
Plan's really up and fantastic.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate your partnership.
We now have a break. It's about 8:05, no, 8:07, so we'll break until 8:17.
Okay.
So we see in a full screen. All right. Sorry. You see a full screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So good evening, Board members. Dr. Haas as well, and the community. I am Bernard Hairston, your Assistant Superintendent of School and Community Empowerment. I will be joined by Jasmine Fernandez this evening, the Project Manager of the Anti-Racism Stirring Committee and Policy Implementation Team. We will present an overview and update to the Anti-Racism Policy Implementation Plan since our last presentation to the board on February 13, 2020. We will share how the policy regulations were strategically outlined into a logic model design that had the built-in key activities, key strategies, and progressive outline measurable designs built in. In February, we present examples of startup initiatives, such as kicking off a student advisory group, launching a review of equitable survey interviews from teachers of color, and steps to identify equity needs assessment tools. Today, what we would like to do is to provide you with some updates on those action steps to these startup initiatives that we presented back in February, as well as some other initiatives. Sorry about that. The anti racism policy statement is being promoted as part of our division level staff meetings. It is presented with equal value to our mission and vision statement, our equity mission statement, and the strategic priorities, values, and goals of our school division, and it's presented as a top priority message to staff and the community. It reads, "Alamo County Public Schools is committed to establishing and sustaining an equitable community that achieves the school division's equity mission to end the predictive value of race and ensure each individual student's and staff's success." Yes.
That's not appearing, the slides are a little bit off. Okay, there it is, it's there now. Okay.
"The Alamo County School Board and the School Division re- rejects all forms of racism as destructive to their, their mission, vision, values, and goals." So if, do you see it moving now? Is the screen moving now?
No.
Okay, good. So, we have expanded our committee from seventeen to twenty-four members. The expansion of the team members are highlighted. We have added a learning technology integrator. We have added a student support program manager, instructional lead coaches. We have added department heads from the division, a research and program evaluator, a director of guidance and counseling, and building level administrators. This expansion requires us to expand our diversity as a team simply because of a greater need for implementing the twenty-two-plus regulations within the policy. As you all well know, the policy is organized around five broad categories. Policy communication, leadership and administration, curriculum and instruction, and professional learning slash training and policy enforcement. These twenty-four members of the Strategic Committee are responsible for creating strategies to ensure that these policies are, these categories, the twenty-four, twenty-plus, I'm sorry, the twenty-plus regulations are carried out through the policy. We have developed a report, a comprehensive report for your review. We hope that you will take the time to read that report in detail. We hope that as members of the School Board, you will consider the potential impact of this anti racism policy as a means of shifting our culture. As you all well know, writing the policy was the first step, but the most important work to occur with the implementation is what we do next. So I'd like to next turn this over to Jasmine Fernandez to walk us through some of the highlights of the report that you have received.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harston. As mentioned, my name is Jasmine Fernandez. I serve as a project advisor and the program manager for the Anti Racism Policy Steering Committee. Our presentation cannot be more timely, but as I shared with you all during our February update, and as many of the staff have heard me say, this work is not about the moment, it's about the movement. We are engaging in legacy work, and while we know that the road ahead is long, we are very proud of the infrastructure that we've created over the last nine months. As Dr. Harrison shared, I trust also that you all have already read the report, which includes comprehensive status updates for all of our key projects. For this evening, in an honor to, in an effort to honor the time allotted to us today, but also bring your attention to new items that we haven't had the chance to discuss with you in the past, I will focus this presentation on a few particular projects. Next slide. As it pertains to policy communications, when we presented to you in February, we shared that the Student Equity Advisory Team C was in the process of being formed. Since then, the group has been up and running. The group includes representatives from all of our high schools. Their role is to present, to promote equity and anti racism and serve as leaders and spokespeople within their schools and the division. One highlight of their efforts this year included educating the community on the concept of structural racism. In May, C organized a student-led town hall called Twenty Twenty Vision: Seeing COVID Through An Anti-Racist Lens to examine the disproportionate impact of COVID nineteen on Black and Latinx communities. The conversation brought healthcare and government officials together to talk about COVID nineteen and its community impact. Following the town hall, members of C were invited to join the governor for one of his daily COVID nineteen press briefings. Next slide. As you know, per the policy and report, there are a number of deliverables under Leadership Administration. In particular, this evening, we would like to highlight the work of piloting a department-based equity needs assessment for the Human Resources Department. Per the charge in the policy and the School Board's Directive to Increase Minority Representation, the HR team formed a department-based equity team. As part of assessing the team's individual racial consciousness and how their views influence and interact with the department's culture, the team utilized the Transforming Organizational Culture Assessment TOCA tool. The tool allowed the team to reflect on their perception of race, racism, and white privilege, and how it manifested in the organization's policies and practices. In an effort to examine the experiences of educators of color, the team learned more broadly about the experiences of teachers of color through articles, podcasts, data, and research. And to learn more specifically about why ACPS educators of color have resigned, the team examined letters of resignation and exit interviews. And what we found was the need to rework our exit survey to allow for more racialized feedback. Additionally, rather than waiting until after our educators of color leave, a next step will be to convene a focus group with current educators of color to better understand the barriers that prevent them from staying with us. Next slide. In regards to curriculum and instruction, as we explained in the report, we know that there are a number of teachers across the country who want to implement anti racist curriculum, but they don't know how or don't have the resources to do so. In an effort to ensure our teachers can effectively assess their lesson plans for racial bias and teach lessons rooted in anti racism, the Department of Instruction developed the Anti Racist Betting Tool. We also adopted a culturally responsive and anti racist curriculum assessment tool. We've started curriculum assessment and resource reviews for English Language Arts and Social Studies. The report outlines the different ongoing efforts, but I just want to quickly highlight two points. As it pertains to English Language Arts, a number of secondary teachers, media specialists, and instructional coaches participated recently in an eight-week discussion group called "Letting Go of Literary Whiteness" in order to build specific practices for implementing anti racist literature instruction. As for social studies, through the work of reframing the narrative, we continue to engage in ongoing professional development related to developing anti racist, culturally responsive history curriculum and curricula design experiences for teachers. Twenty-five teachers attended the Facing History in Ourselves workshop, Race and Membership, the Eugenics Movement, and seventy teachers came together from across the state to study Teaching Tolerant's Hard History and Social Justice Framework. And as you know, thanks to your approval, we recently purchased copies of Stamped Racism, Anti Racism, and U for every eleventh grade student. Next slide. The next two slides are about key projects from the Training Subcommittee. As we explain in the report, building the racial consciousness and ability to address acts of racism of individuals and the division as a whole takes time. And in effort to build a basic foundation about race, we've implemented a division-wide book study and the Train the Trainer Model based on Glenn Singleton's Courageous Conversations About Race, a field guide for achieving equity in schools. So the same way that you all have been engaging in School Board PD sessions around this book, all of our school administrators and department leaders have been tasked with facilitating the book study and training their staff. We are offering ongoing support for division leaders as they implement the protocols, including a facilitator's guide. As for the anti racism policy orientation, it's important for the public to know that this orientation was not created as a result of recent events. This orientation has been in the works for months. The orientation includes a review of the policy's purpose, guiding principles, definitions, and videos to support understanding of key concepts. To ensure accessibility, the orientation includes a voiceover and will be translated. All staff are required to complete the orientation. To this end, we understand that this orientation is not the end-all be-all. We will continue to provide ongoing professional development to all of our divisional staff around race and anti racism. Next slide. One of policy enforcement's deliverables includes producing this report. Because this is our first full year of implementation, the report takes more of a qualitative approach. But as highlighted, we've already started identifying key metrics for the various projects, and we've developed an evaluation plan that can be found in the appendix. Next year's report will include more metrics and a review of our progression on the respective logic models. And in the spirit of transparency, we thought it was important to share some of our lessons learned from this past year. First, strengthening the committee and division's proficiency regarding race. So this past spring, many of our administrators and departmental leaders reached out to us, and we thought rather than be reactive, we wanted to build on the internal proficiency of our division, which included moving beyond using coded language and using explicit terminology about race, as well as engaging in interracial dialogues that centered race. As it pertains to expanding the internal capacity, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, we were really intentional about expanding our committee this summer, and part of it was we realized that many of the people on the committee were the same people involved in other division-wide efforts, but even more detrimental to the work, our committee did not fully represent the division. As Dr. Harrison mentioned, in addition to adding more people of color, we added more principals and members from our support teams, including departmental leaders from Building Services, Transportation, Counseling Services, and in January, a librarian and teacher will be joining us. As for student voice, in addition to C, we thought it was important to have two student interns sit on the actual steering committee, and we are in the process of backfilling these positions as the two student interns from last year have since graduated, but they are still involved with C. Also, we intend to develop a recruitment plan to include middle school students. Next slide. And so, again, we know that we have a long way to go, and as we've said in the report, and you know, the reality is even when the social hashtags are no longer in use or the media has moved on to the next hot topic, we know that now more than ever, we must persist. We must continue to do this work, we must all show up, and we cannot afford to lose momentum. And so quickly, some of the key next steps that I would like to highlight this evening include our public awareness campaign. C and the Policy Communications Subcommittee will co-create a social media public awareness campaign that educates the public on the types of racism that exist and the ways that one can become anti racist. The public awareness campaign will kick off in February of twenty twenty-one in honor of the two-year anniversary of the School Board's approval of the ACPS Anti Racism Policy. As it pertains to anti racism curriculum, we will continue to make progress in refining our English Language Arts and Social Studies curricula while developing our plans to begin assessing other curricula, including science and math. As for the teacher appraisal performance, the Human Resources Department is taking the lead on this effort of updating the TPA. We will have members of the Anti Racism Committee join the TPA working group, and the ultimate goal is to embed culturally responsive teaching into the appraisal process and use an anti racist lens to delete, edit, and add new look fours while ensuring that we're in alignment with ACPS other priorities. And so, before we open it up for questions, I would like to formally just take a moment to thank our steering committee. I know many of them are tuning in this evening, as well as our Student Equity Advisory Team for their flexibility, for their leadership, for their persistency around this work. And I know that Dr. Harrison and Dr. Haas share the sentiment, and we look forward to continuing to build alongside them and you, our School Board, in hopes of one day becoming an anti racist school district. Thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain any questions or comments that you all may have.
I have a question about your, excuse me, your community forum, and just curious to see what kind of engagement you did get for that.
Are you referring to the Student Equity Advisory Town Hall that they put, yes?
Right, exactly, sorry.
No, it's okay. No worries, there were roughly over seventy people that showed up, and I have to tell you, it was a Saturday morning, so that was very impressive, and it was completely led and facilitated by the young people. They started off with just a general, overall presentation explaining what is anti racism, the different types of racism, and then spent more time specifically on structural racism. And then the students themselves were actually the moderators for the presentation. And then afterwards, it was an opportunity for Q and A where the students got to ask the government and healthcare professionals just more questions related to what are the trends, what are the next steps, what's the impact, what's going on specifically in Charlottesville? I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I would just like to ask, because I sat in on the seat meeting last spring, and I thought it was absolutely terrific. And it, and I thought the three speakers from the community were outstanding. Have there been other, I mean, I know you're talking about their involvement moving forward. Have they been involved with the, with the team and, in the meantime, in the last four or five months?
So, the C took a break over the summer, and we allowed them some time to readjust to schedules, and so they picked up their meetings this fall. Since then, they continue to meet regularly, and they're already just kind of, at this point, they're working towards their plans for the spring. So that's really been their attention, and where they've been focusing, their attention this fall has been on the plans for the spring. And so that includes for the public awareness campaign, but also one thing that came up over the summer was back in June, they had some ideas about how they can support their peers in making, reporting acts of racism and how to use social media, or rather, our anonymous, our anonymous alert app. And so that is one thing that they will be working on with Dr. King, is thinking about how to create some tutorials. So that's really where some of their work was been, has been from June and where they are now.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Are there other questions?
Are there other questions?
Yeah, just, just a follow-up on that about the Anonymous Alerts app. What would you say the status is now of usage of that?
I would have to check in with, with Dr. King just to see what has been reported this fall. But one thing that we learned from the young people was just that, you know, not everyone knows how to use the app. The one thing I would just caution us is that, you know, the app, even then, when you report it, there are different layers, right? In terms of like the detail, the level of detail. And so we wouldn't necessarily want to solely rely on this app to report acts of racism and to follow up. But one thing that the students did talk about was it's one thing when they're learning about this from their peers. And so how do they make the app more accessible for their counterparts?
And I also just wanted to thank you for your work on all this. The whole team has, it's, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and work gone into it.
Thank you so much.
We have arranged for Dr. King to provide a training session with the students on the app so that they can assist with, also sharing with their peers, how to use the app to its maximum capacity.
Thank you.
I have a question on the exit interviews that you're using. How, how is that information being used now? Who has access to it and how is it used to sort of benefit us?
Yeah, absolutely. I really appreciate your question. So the group that has access to that is the Human Resources Equity Team and more broadly, the Human Resources Department. And how they're using that information right now, I would tell you, is even in thinking about recruitment and interviews, how are we really being intentional about the questions that we're asking, who we're recruiting? And then also just starting to think about next step related to practices and policies and thinking about just more how their own biases may be impacting the screening process. And so there are, there are a lot of conversations right now about what are the next steps in that regard. And in particular, doing some more, you know, qualitative assessments with current educators of color so that we can better understand what are some of the barriers. And I kind of alluded to this a little bit, but even in the exit survey, thinking about how we are reworking some of that language to allow for more feedback. So just an example would be, what more could we do to better affirm your race and ethnicity in our, in our schools, right? Those types of questions that would allow for more feedback. But, you know, I would also just put this out there, Chair Page, that one thing we have talked a lot about very candidly is being cognizant that for educators of color, they often feel the pressure and sometimes even the fear of that, that there may be retaliation if they are too honest, right? Or that they may be boxed out, out of opportunities to advance. And, you know, that's not on them, right? It's not on them to have to feel like they need to speak out. It's on us as, as, as an organization. And so we're really spending more time thinking about what does that look like for every step of the way, right? What does it look like when we're onboarding them? What does it look like once they are in the buildings? And how can we better support them, not just to come to work at ACPS, but to retain them over time?
Thank you. Are there other questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Harrison and Ms. Fernandez, for your excellent report. And I see that the next update is what, September? Was that right?
May.
May, okay, right.
So we'll have an opportunity to share progress from this fall and the spring, and then a look ahead of our summer plans.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both again. Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Fernandez. Okay. Next item, State of the Division Report, led by Dr. Haas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Page. Good evening again, members of the school board and Chair Page and Vice Chair Carlson. I too want to thank Dr. Harrison and Ms. Fernandez for that outstanding report. It was not only quite informative and authentic with the work that's taken place, but also it was really a pleasure to read. It was so well done. It's my pleasure to share with the board tonight for information with you via the copy attached to your agenda item, the 2020 ACPS State of the Division Report. This report is shared with you in light of School Board Policy AF, our commitment to accomplishment, to share data relative to our strategic plan, Horizon 2020. I hope you will take time to read it, especially the information provided regarding our schools and departments' strategic improvement plans. We've titled the State of the Division 2020 Report, "A Time Like, Unlike Any Other, For Good Reason." When the 2019-20 school year dawned on August 21st, 2019, it opened the window on what was widely anticipated to be an exciting and influential year for the division's more than fourteen thousand students and their families, our many community partners, and nearly three thousand employees. Then, March 13th, 2020 happened. In a matter of days, schools across the Commonwealth closed. And while the education process didn't stop, school divisions were compelled to readjust their operations to fit within strict public health and safety boundaries. While we have not found perfect solutions for our current challenges, our employees have been truly inspiring in their efforts. I see them doing the best they can to tackle online learning and virus mitigation with a level of bravery and enthusiasm that is truly reassuring. There's a lot going right, thanks to our teachers and support staff. I'm deeply grateful for and proud of all of our employees for accepting the great challenges before us and taking actions to surmount them. In the face of diversity, they are working to make our facilities and buses safer and to provide high-quality teaching and learning. Our employees are amazing and courageous. Share my screen. Oops. Press the wrong button. Present, not share. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. The State of the Division Report for Alamo County Public Schools has seen many iterations over the past decade or so since inception in 2010. Especially during the past two years, we have tried very hard to not simply gloss over or shine the spotlight away from the areas we are striving to improve. We have become more detailed with student demographic information, and we are, and we share the results we have, the positives and the negatives, so that our students, staff, families, and our board can see where we are doing well and falling short, and can provide feedback and pitch in to improve Alamo County Public Schools. In order to produce this report, it takes a team effort. I want to thank Pat McLaughlin, Jamie Geldner, Chris Gilman, India Hawn, Phil Jeramida, Jennifer Butler, Lindsay Snotty, Christina Pitsenberger, Bernard Harrison, Kelvin Reed, Maya Kumazawa, Daphne Kaiser, Michelle Kastner, Emily Elliott, Jen Sublet, Kevin Kurst, Rosalyn Schmidt, Nick King, Nita Collier, and Jim Foley. I suggest that over the next week or so, or two weeks, that as you review the report, that you keep a copy of our vision, mission, and values close at hand and use it as a rubric to assess whether we are keeping up to these commitments. Are we striving to establish a community of learners and learning through relationships, relevance, and rigor, one student at a time? Do we act to support all learners in believing in their power to embrace learning, to excel, and to own their future? Is it apparent that we value our community, young people, and excellence and give our school community its due respect? Are we working hard to provide staff and resources and professional development to produce high-quality teaching and learning for all? Are we taking steps to end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities on student success by working together with families and communities to ensure each individual student's success? When I read the report, I'm proud of some of the results we are getting and not so proud of others. However, I am very proud of all of our students, employees, and families for the work they are doing to keep us moving in the right direction and sometimes just stopping us from continuing in the wrong direction. With efforts I see and hear about every day, I know we are getting better, and the data will show it all across the board one day as well. And how are we doing when it comes to our students' graduation? Are we advancing in our efforts to support all of Alamo County Public Schools, students, graduates, graduating, to having actively mastered the lifelong learning skills they need to succeed as 21st century learners, workers, and citizens? I note that soon, this student goal and the associated strategies will sunset. They have served as guideposts for our school system for a little more than seven years now. And it is time to become more current with an improvement plan with a greater focus on responsibility for specified plans and actions to see the changes that we desire. Beginning in 2021, our school board will have your own strategic plan that is vetted and approved by you, and I look forward to that. Now, at least for my part, I do think these strategic priorities, I think of them as our board's priorities, as you have examined and revised them, as you have seen fit. And frankly, these priorities have been very powerful in guiding our work recently. When I read the State of the Division Report, I see these priorities as truly reflected as important. They are your flag and your colors, and they show in our work. The question is, are we striving to create a culture of high expectations for all? Are we identifying and removing practices that perpetuate the achievement gap? Are we working to maximize opportunities for students at all levels to identify and develop personal interests? I know that it is important to focus on the what, the numbers, and the outcomes. It is also important to focus on the how in terms of the plans, strategies, and actions we are actually taking to provide a quality education system for our students, families, and communities. That's why I really think it's important when you review the report to go to the last section and look closely at the school improvement plans and also the departmental improvement plans, because it really gets into the details of how we are doing, what we are doing, and why we are doing it. Turning our priorities into questions helps us to do that. And when the questions are not answered to your satisfaction, a new question stem helps. How might we? How might we create a culture of high expectations for all? I recently asked Dr. McLaughlin to add a section to the report at the beginning to include overall information about our division. I understand that when we strive for continuous improvement, it is often hard to say that what we are doing and the results that we are getting are good enough. I do want to say to our board and community of educators and learners, however, that your day-to-day hard work is not taken for granted. All of you, our staff, students, and community, and families run an enviable organization in terms of quality. And you do it on a tax rate for Alamo Marl that is an effective tax rate of about sixty-five cents. Sometimes when things are going very well, run by our teachers, support staff, administrators, students, and families, it is easy to take all of it for granted. ACPS is a very large and efficient organization that provides super-high-quality services to our customers, employees, and community. I mean, we even offer flu shots and shingles vaccinations for our employees for, as part of their plan. We serve eight thousand meals to students daily. Everything our educators, support staff, and administrators do is extremely well organized and safe. During normal times, quote-unquote "normal" times, in the neighborhood of seventeen thousand people ranging in age from three to approximately seventy years old and speaking close to one hundred languages at home occupy more than thirty building sites and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four miles driven on our roads. And it all goes extremely well. In fact, it's so unusual when it doesn't, we hear about it pretty loud and clear. We are able to hire and retain highly qualified, experienced, and talented teachers and provide excellent professional development. And our building services staff are amazing at maintaining and improving our facilities, some of them approaching a century old. Our organization works extremely well and we rank highly in Virginia on many measures. When we survey our community annually, responding families mostly tell us they are satisfied. I know we still need to hear from families we often do not hear from and continue to do better. We run a safe, organized, and beneficial community organization. And as the person responsible for it, submit in gratitude to all of our amazing teachers, support staff, and administrators. Thank you. I'm proud to be part of Alamo County Public Schools, and yet I have work to do, and we all have work to do to keep getting better. We need to keep rising up. Recently, I had been reading a wonderful leadership book by author and lecturer on business and social work, leadership. The author's name is Brene Brown, and the title of the book is Dare to Lead. Brown's Three Steps Toward Rising Up and Rising Strong really resonate with me, so I felt like I would share them this evening. All throughout the State of the Division Report, we find opportunities to rise, to improve, and it is clear to be open in accepting the facts and truth about our performance. When we do this, we are reckoning. When we own the facts and own our true story, we are able to talk with our other stakeholders about it honestly. We are rumbling. And when we make improvements and follow through to write an improved story, we are in revolution. I want to offer an example. Last year... Let's see if I can move this. Last year, I shared three strategic goals with the board in October that resulted from data points in the 2019 State of the Division Report. This was a reckoning for me, and I shared it with the school board and the Alamo County Schools leadership team. Rumbling ensued as we worked with principals, instructional staff, lead and instructional coaches, and teachers to put strategies in place to accomplish the goals toward seeing a revolution. And you may remember these goals. Later on, if you want to click up here on the date, the full report is, is there, was in response to the, it was an update on the State of the Division Report and also the Equity Report that we looked at last year. What the first one was to reduce suspension of black students. The second was to increase by two percent or more the representation of black, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities among passing students on the third-grade reading SOL at the end of this, this coming, at the end of this school year. Increase by one percent or more the representation of the same groups of students in students taking high school math and middle school during the 2021-22 school year. All of the actions with regard to this particular goal were taken. I use this goal and actions and outcomes and reflections as part of my case study for my culturally responsive teaching micro credential. We just about achieved the goal. The goal was to reduce it to twenty percent, and we landed on twenty-one percent. And we, in comparing the number of suspensions, when you look at the table in the, in the State of the Division Report, that's one way we look at it. We're comparing from, on another table, when you compare from March to March, we are, we were on track to have reduced overall suspensions for all students that year. We just about achieved the goal. I found too, that in my research for my micro credential, that secondary principals shifted their thinking and actions as part of this process. In fact, I was talking with Dr. King about it the other day, and he said, in going through the protocol that we developed with a principal that had called about suspending a student, the principal finished the conversation and said, you know, I just realized I do not... The principal finished the conversation and said, you know, I just realized I do not need. And I don't need to suspend this student. And that was the goal was to rethink that process. Now we realize we need to go deeper, however, into elementary school. And into our classrooms across the county. So the next thing we're looking at is developing. We, a school level dashboard, we do have one now that's, that has real time suspension data. But we also want to have office referral data so that we can see where the referrals are coming from and support. Teachers to make improvements. Dr. King also overhauled our student manual. And that's part of the anti racist project report that you read tonight. So all these things dovetail. I also want to say that all of the actions that were outlined here for this goal. Were also taken. The real hitch though is that we do not have S O L results from this past spring. To see how we were doing in making our way and. Having said that, we will have standards of learning assessment results this spring. So that we can see where students are and that that will be very important as we think about recovering and remediation coming from. The COVID-19 closures. One note on the division level P L C for third grade reading. I know now that all across the division at every grade level and across subject areas, there are division level. Professional learning community meetings taking place. Often they are taking place on the Friday asynchronous day. And that's a big step forward and it's facilitated by using Zoom for these meetings. Because the teachers do not need to travel to do that and will be continuing that practice moving forward to facilitate their meetings. On this third goal. We do have, all the middle schools have launched programs for their current students. I would say they're not as robust as they could have been in an in-person environment if without the COVID-19 closures that took place. The, the middle school principals meet as a group to discuss this, increasing these numbers of students. Our goal will be to have a more unified approach among the principals. When we talk about attending a summer math program. Each, each school does their, their program. And one hitch in this process is that students rising up from elementary school from fifth grade and going into sixth grade. In the middle school, often there's not enough, a large enough number of students. At the elementary school level for a particular elementary school. So one of the solutions to that. Is to have the middle school own that program in the summer for their, for their own rising sixth graders. And that was uncovered through discussing the, the procedures that the, that the different schools use. So it's been very productive conversation. There's a lot of rumbling take place around, taking place around this. And I think that we're going to be in good shape moving forward with it. It's, it's one of those things where sometimes you don't know what you don't know. Until you set the goal and start asking questions about what's, what's currently taking place. So board members and central office staff, I ask that we all read through this report. And with the rubric of our mission, vision, values, goals and priorities in mind. I'm, I'm understanding now that we have enough board members to have a work session. On the December 17th meeting, right after the legislator meeting. And so we can do a similar work session to the one we did last year. Where board members had had time to read through the state of the division report prior to the work session. And came ready to really rumble and discuss the results that are in it. And revisit board priorities and also provide guidance to, to us, to your staff. On budget development as we, as we make our way moving forward. I think that that was a very robust budget development process last year. It really is too bad that the original funding request went out with the advent of COVID-19. And speaking of which. In reading about recovery and remediation of student learning and social emotional well being in the rising. And I hope sometime soon to be the waning tide of COVID-19. A few key points come to mind at a very high level. We will need to plan on how and when to make up. Or when to make a summative assessment of our students' learning from kindergarten through 11th grade. To make plans for regaining lost ground. The strategies for recovery and remediation fall into three broad categories as outlined on this slide. Right now, probably the most pressing from a student, employee and family standpoint. Is to think about time. As you know, there are several aspects of school time, including the starting date for school, summer programming. The length of the school year and how it is broken up or extended. And even class time for concentration on time on task. I am currently going to focus on a start date for the 2021 22 school year and begin. A round of community conversations about it to see what our educators, families and community think. Next week I will be hosting teachers and building level administrators in a conversation on November 18th. To facilitate input on a draft start date. And other aspects of the calendar so that we have enough to make a draft. One of the things that I am going to do as well is. Take, take a fair amount of time in talking with the teachers that are assembled as well as. Their, their principals that, that come to the meeting and share with them our equity table. While we at the school board level and also at the central office level. And I think perhaps at the building administrator level have become pretty well versed on looking at the equity table. And understanding what it means in terms of our equity mission. I do not think we've done a good job at all of sharing out with teachers. That equity table. And one of the goals that I have moving forward in this year. Is to push down and have an equity table for each level of school. So that we can increase the excitement and the, the passion around closing those equity gaps that, that we have as a school system. By doing it one school at a time. As part of this board item, I have attached the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization UNESCO report. Of COVID-19 response remediation, helping students catch up on lost learning with a focus on closing equity gaps. Ultimately, once we have grappled with and defined the problems resulting from an exacerbating exacerbated by COVID-19. We will need several teams to develop plans for 2021 22. Rising strong from COVID-19 will be a challenge. However, it will also be an amazing opportunity. To apply a lot of what we're learning during this time, a lot of the silver linings. To improve our system to better support our students, educators and families. Our first goal in this process will be to have multiple opportunities for input from our school community. As I said earlier. I am proud of Alamo County Public Schools and I'm proud to share this report with our school board and community. We will be sending the report out to all of our families and employees via an email and Blackboard Connect next week. We'll also be doing the same thing with our anti racism report so that all can read it. I will certain, I'm certain that you will find this report useful, hopeful and true. And that this annual port through our transparency will lead to priorities, allocation of resources. And actions that will help us get better and have improved opportunities and results for our students. So the next step will be to unpack the report. And have a, have a rumble at a work session on the December 17th like we did last year. I do have all the cabinet members here, I think still. And so if you have any questions that are right off the top of your mind, or if there's a day additional data that you would like to see. You could ask now, but also please feel free to email, email me or email Dr. McLaughlin. Over the next several days and month for more information you would like to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Are there any questions or comments on our state of the division from Dr. Haas?
I certainly haven't studied it to the depth that I need to, but I thought it was very well put together. And I also took a look at the McKenzie UNESCO report and that. Is very well laid out, so I highly recommend that. The most distressing thing that we've already talked about. Is how this year will exacerbate the achievement gaps. And perhaps. Push more kids into the underachieving category. So we have, we will have work to do, but anyway, we will discuss.
Are there any other comments?
Matt, I just want to say that I think this is a terrific. Report and I've gone through it, you know, from, from front to back. I like Kate haven't studied it. In, in the kind of detail that I want to. But I think for the meeting on December 17th, that is, is going to be one where I think we can have a lot of frank conversations. And, and I'll be sending in some emails with, with points with, with additional questions. And for your interpretations of some of the data points that, that I'm seeing in the report. So thank you very much to you and your entire team for all the hard work that went into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Haas, thank you for always calling our attention to. Things that may not be easy for us to accept or to realize that's there to call it. We're calling our attention to problems that exist within our system. Because those problems really need to be tackled. So I really appreciate the fact that you always call our attention to, to those facts and those details that we need to be aware of. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item. The V S B, V S B A policies and regulations from our delegate, Vice Chair, Mrs. Carlson.
Everyone, I know it's late, so don't worry. This is going to be under 25 minutes. When I timed it, it came in at 23 minutes, so we should be good. In short, just to keep new board members up to date on what we're doing. The V S B A puts together a packet of legislative proposals, which are basically things that they go and lobby the legislature for, the state legislature. The proposals are submitted by various counties and localities and then they put together a list. It's very brief this year. I'm welcome you to look over it. If you have anything you want me to say when we vote on these, I'm happy to do so. Nothing seemed particularly contentious. There was only one proposal that had one dissenting vote. So they're all vetted, they're all vetted before they come to us to look at. There's only one dissenting vote in the whole packet and that was about having behavioral interventionist as a standard of. Quality position, which would open up some funding sources for getting basically more mental health counselors and helpers into our schools. If, I'm assuming we won't have any issue with this, so then when I go to the V S B A delegate assembly meeting, which is occurring on Monday. I will just vote yes, and then they will, the V S B A will use its lobbying arm to push these proposals. And hopefully get some of them passed. It usually is a long process that takes a little bit of time. It usually. Kind of you propose something and then you propose the next year and eventually maybe something happens. So yeah, if we're all in agreement, then that's all I need is the support of the board to vote yes. For the V S B A to lobby for these proposals. I will say real quick, just one thing that, and Dave, you did this last year, right? One thing that kind of shocked me the first go around was just that the positions don't all necessarily align exactly with what we want to do as a school board. Because mainly the V S B A is just advocating for local autonomy. So it's really just about the ability for school boards to make their own decisions. How do you guys feel about it?
You know, I just have a question about one of them, but maybe you and I can talk off, off of outside of the meeting. It's on number three with the affordability of dual enrollment. And I think that we've got a lot of that covered. And so this may be involving other, other divisions more so than us.
That's interesting and I was curious about that one as well. I'm certainly not an expert on these proposals. I've read through them. I'm, I'm, I was curious just because I thought dual enrollment was free for our students, but I guess that's us covering the cost. And I guess there is some kind of floor that they put on, on what you, you have to charge a minimum amount. I guess we just covered that as a division. I wasn't sure. But I didn't figure it would affect us one way or another because it's just saying it should be as. You should be able to decide, you should have the autonomy as a local school division to decide how much you want to charge for dual enrollment.
I agree. Thank you. And, and I vote yes.
Katrina, I didn't see it on there. Maybe I didn't read carefully. What is the status of the hold harmless for enrollment in terms of school reimbursements?
I do not know. I don't know if Helen's on. I would not be, I didn't read it in there in my packet, so I don't know.
When I saw Sally Hudson at something a couple of weeks ago, she said it was in the governor's budget and he just needed to sign it.
That would be a good thing.
Would be.
I was kind of surprised how sparse this packet was. I don't know why that is. Maybe people are busy putting out fires where they are. But there were, I remember last year or two years ago was a much more robust package of things we were going to be trying to propose. Maybe we realize there's not a lot of wiggle room in state government right now.
Any other comments from Ms. Carlson? Okay, thank you. You really held that under 25 minutes, so.
It's well done.
It wasn't funny Katrina.
If you guys have any comments, you can maybe contact Ms. Carlson before that session. But she really did do a good job in holding that down.
It's all about setting the bar and then, you know, making it easy to hit your goals.
Right. All right. So we, we are now ready for other business by board members or superintendent?
I've got one thing and, and I had intended to do it a little bit earlier in, in the session. But I'd like to take a couple of minutes to, to address an issue that's been important, this in my opinion. An important potential solution to something we were all interested in when we're developing the student representative. To the school board program. And that's getting candid feedback from students initially in the high schools and eventually getting it into middle schools. And you have potentially, you know, on from there. I, early in the summer, I met, not in person, but I met a young woman who is. A junior at Albemarle High School. Her name is Ella Vaisal. And she started a club this school year. She'd been talking to me about it. And hadn't gotten all the bylaws done and didn't, and was going into a school fair to try and get. Members to work with her on it. And she's got 10 or 12. And so this is a real team and it's really now beautifully set up. It's called Albemarle Student Voice. And it revolves around issues from county and school board division policies. And how it affects students in their day to day experiences. Albemarle Student Voice uses Instagram to poll local students about these policies. And give students a voice to provide feedback and insights to both. The Board of Supervisors and the school board. While Albemarle Student Voice is only active at A H S Albemarle High School right now. Ella hopes to represent student voices at Monticello and Western Albemarle before the end of the year. It's her goal that Albemarle Student Voice will be a reference, a big part and a resource for both students and our community leaders. To better understand each other's strategies and positions and to create a more open community. She's a very impressive young woman and you know, this is, this is along the lines of what we were looking at. In terms of getting more feedback. I know that Melania has been working, Melania has been, Melania. I know that Melanie has been working, Melanie has been, Melanie has been working with Dr. McLaughlin on some surveys and some other means to solicit information from students. And A S V is currently polled students online about the online school year and is looking to share their findings with us and with Board of Supervisors. They're just in the process of compiling those data and getting it into a form that they could send to us, present to us, you know, however that would work. They would also, and this is the part where I think we could actually help them, is they would welcome receiving any suggestions from the board that we would like to ask students about, you know, in their surveys. So the bottom line is, and I'm keeping mine under twenty-five minutes too, but I sure didn't want to give Ella a short shrift on this. I applaud her and her team and look forward to hearing further from them. So if you get an email or emails or, you know, some sort of communication from Albemarle Student Voice, please open it and check it out. And she's one of these people who would really welcome a lot of feedback, a lot of critiquing and a lot of the wisdom that I think we could share with her. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And you too held yourself under the twenty-five minute.
I, you know, it was a struggle.
Okay, but I was also thinking that maybe Mr. Trout and Mr. Witt might be able to contact L R at Alamo.
I was just going to say that I was thinking the exact same thing. I know that we've had a lot of, at least in Montreal, I know we've had a lot of sort of the same kind of social media-based student-run organizations, and I think that especially with me being a Monticelloan with Elijah being a Western, I think that can definitely create for some, for some opportunities across all three high schools.
Yeah, I will email you gentlemen her contact information. I'll get that from her and send it out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Melanie would be good to probably still be on this too, so.
Yeah, I actually had spoken to her about this in the, earlier in the fall. And so I'm not sure if the two of them have spoken, but I think they were going to try and get in touch with each other. I think they, I think they've actually met before.
Okay. But thank you. All right. Is there any other business from the superintendent or from our board members?
Thank you, Mr. Page. I just want to thank all of our staff for coming tonight and participating in the meeting. And it's been a real pleasure to see Elijah tonight and also Will. And I just love what I just heard, for whatever it's worth. I just love what Jono talked about or Mr. Alcarro talked about as well as the students. I would love to hear more about this project, so thank you.
Yes, thanks. All right. So again, thanks, as Dr. Haas has said, to all of our staff, to our two student representatives and to all of our people who are listening. So if there is no other items for our consideration, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.